Good evening and welcome to the July 19th regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. Please rise to salute the flag. Roll call of the committee members.
Mr. Feranti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. McGuire.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Rigo.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2016 meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I may point a personal.
Mr. McGuire.
It's with great sadness, my family and the Revere Public School family lost a custodian at the Whalen School, William Leiden, lifelong Revere resident, my cousin, and I'd just like everybody to remember Bill with a little prayer as he moves on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. Going to the approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2016 meeting. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will just begin by taking a minute to express the school department's condolences from central office to the Leiden family. Bill certainly was a treasured member of our staff and everybody who worked with him talked about what a great guy he was. You couldn't, you couldn't work with a nicer person, team player, anything you needed done, he was there to do it, and we're truly going to miss him, and we're very, very sorry for his family's loss. I have three pieces of the superintendent's report that I wanted to share with folks today. The first one I'm really excited about, and it is the naming of our newest principal in district, and that is Steve Magno, who is going to be the next principal of the Seacoast School. Steve has been with us actually for 18 years, which it's amazing to me how quickly the time flies, but he spent six years as special educator at the Garfield Middle School, and after that moved on to become a teacher leader as an educational testing liaison and worked throughout the district helping create IEPs for students and helped with testing and making sure students had the right program that met their needs as individual learners, and spent six years doing that work, and then joined the administrative team as an assistant principal at Revere High School, and he's been in that job for six years. So I don't know if we can anticipate he's going to be a principal for six years. It seems six years is his time to move on to the next challenge in life. So hopefully we'll have him for at least that long at Seacoast. But I know that some of the things that the interview committee were really impressed by when Steve interviewed for the position was his forward thinking and his ideas around creating pathways for these students at Seacoast to get into career positions and do internships and have real kinds of experiences outside of a traditional school day that will hopefully keep them engaged enough to complete the degree requirements, the diploma requirements that will help them move on, and, you know, he talked about engaging all kinds of different social service agencies to help these kids get the wraparound services that they need to make sure that they can be successful students. And everybody on the committee was very impressed with the ideas he shared that were a little bit more on the innovative side and less on, you know, routine kind of classroom-school side of the business. And I think that with Steve's background in special education and his background working with students at risk and students in need, he's going to be a true asset to that school. So we're really excited to have him on board. I do have to mention that a couple of the leadership roles that Steve has played in the district, he's been instrumental on the Revere Educators Leadership Board, he's worked on the Teacher Leadership and Career Ladders group, and has been instrumental in the development of our Peer Assistance Pilot. He also worked at the state level on the Professional Learning Network, which was a group of committees, Revere was one of them, from across the state that got together to design teacher leadership models and distributed leadership models, and that's where the Revere Public Schools PA model got its roots and really got started to take shape and then came back and the RHEL committees continued to work on that. So Steve really has been a leader in that work, and we're going to continue to tap into him and his, as a resource to help us as we move forward with that model. The other thing that I do want to mention is that Steve was one of the founding fathers of the Revere Public Schools lacrosse team. And, you know, the team has only been in place for about three years now, but Steve was an advocate for having lacrosse here long, much, many years before that. It's always been a passion of his, and his passion, I think, was evident in the success of the team this year. As the coach, he, you know, led them through just an incredible season. For a team that's only three years old to have the kind of season they did this year is just remarkable. And in addition to that, the Northeast Conference saw fit to name him Coach of the Year. So he's had a lot of success this year, you know, and we're really excited to have him on the leadership team and really excited to help him bring Revere Public Schools to the next level of achievement, particularly at Seacoast School. And I'll just mention, he's four days out of surgery. So he's not exactly comfortable and had to wear what he could fit over his, you know, surgery wrapping, so I'll just mention that as he.
(inaudible).
But it's a testament, it's a testament to his resilience that he's here four days after surgery. So thanks very much, Steve. We welcome you to the team. Want to say a few words.
Well, it seems like the sixes are my wild card, and also every time I have surgery, I seem to get promoted. So I guess the next time I'll be up at this desk. Thank you very much. I'd like to say thank you to Doctors Kelly, Mokaba, Vedala, informer assistant, Super Mr. Malone, Mayor Rigo, members of the school committee for having the confidence of me to carry the torch as Seacoast High School principal. I'm entering, as Dr. Kelly said, my 19th year of service in the Revere Public Schools, and in fact, my entire career has been spent working in the Revere Public Schools. Actually, I believe Carol hired me. And during that time, I've had the privilege, as Dr. Kelly mentioned, to work with a number of wonderful people in a number of different buildings and a number of different jobs that I've had. I have very strong family ties to the Revere community, and I'm committed to the continued excellence of the Revere Public Schools. Having served my last six years as AP here at the high school, my goal is to work to strengthen relationships between the two buildings so that we can best develop programs to service utmost at-risk populations. I will continue to embrace the four Rs that the district lives by to transform and rebrand the alternative programs. I know it won't be easy, but I'm excited about my new role as principal. I'm looking forward to working with the current Seacoast administration and staff, actually Stacy, the current assistant principal, and I started together, and she had a classroom for six years together. And I'm going to continue to develop rigorous and challenging programs so that all of our students can experience post-secondary success. So I thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the task.
If I could just. Ms. Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I mean, I have known Steve since he was a youngster because, of course, his father was a great educator and science educator in the Revere Public Schools for years. And I'm a little prejudiced, too, because I had Stephanie as a student in high school, and she was really terrific, you know, and I've watched the little girl get bigger and bigger. But anyway, I know there are big shoes to fill down there, but if there is anybody here in the system who could fill them, I think it's you, Steve. And you have been terrific right from the beginning. When I hired you, you came in zap and you were ready to go. And it's interesting that we clapped for you as you were a coach. And that's when you got, that's when you got the applause. But, I mean, I think that's indicative of your leadership and your ability to relate to kids and to relate to adults, to devote yourself to the cause to the fullest, to the fullest extent, and to, to use all of your great and notable abilities, and I hope you will continue to use those down at Seacoast because those kids really need you. Thank you.
Mrs. Rizzo.
You have big shoes to fill through Tom Michie, but I'm sure you're going to bring all your innovation and new things, new and improved ideas. I think you and Stacy are going to be a great team together. You have a great staff, and I can't wait to come down and visit and see what's going on. So thank you. I really appreciate you taking this position.
So, Mr. Mayor, the next piece that we have in the superintendent's report is around the comprehensive program review. This is an audit that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does biannually, and they come in and they take a look at our special programs, including special education and our programs for English language learners. You each have a packet in front of you that has a copy of the report, and Mr. Mogavero is here tonight. What they do when they come and review our programs is an audit of our records and our procedures and our policies and student files and everything that we work. It's a large body of work, and we are thankful to the state that they give us some direction on what we should work on in order to make our programs stronger than it currently is. So I've invited Mr. Mogavero to share with us the English language learner portion of the comprehensive program review.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the Honorable School Committee, Mayor Rigo, Superintendent Dr. Kelly, Assistant Superintendents Dr. Mokaba and Dr. Vedala for inviting me here tonight to speak to you and share with you our English Language Learner Coordinated Program Review Report from the Department of Education. Every six years, a coordinated program review is conducted by a team of evaluators from the Department of Education, and it looks at our programs, both strengths and weaknesses, and sees whether we are in compliance with both state and federal regulations as it pertains to the education of English language learners. The program, the program, the coordinated program review or audit looks at 18 criteria elements, which mostly deals with assessment, identification and placement of students, professional development, curriculum, instruction for ESL, ELL students in the classroom, equal access to both academic and non-academic programs, follow-up support for English language learners, monitoring of former English language learners, our exiting policy when students leave our programs and no longer need ESL services, record-keeping, how well our students are doing in learning English, and how we communicate with our non-English speaking parents. The review informs us of the structures we have in place and how well we're doing. In October, in October, two members from the Department of Education reviewed our ELL program. They interviewed principals, teachers, students. They surveyed parents. They selected and screened 25 Cume folders, visited classrooms, interviewed, and then interviewed me. I'm pleased, we did receive that final report in late April 2016, both Dr. Kelly and myself. I'm pleased to announce that the review reported that we were fully in compliance with 15 of the 18 criteria elements and partially in compliance with three of the criteria elements. Therefore, we are required as a district to develop a corrective action plan to address these partially implemented findings. It's very important that we do that to improve our program and improve the education for our English language learners. The three partially implemented findings concerned inadequate ESL instructional time. There is a requirement that the department has that students receive certain ESL instructional time for some students and some clerical record keeping. Both the superintendent and I have met several times, discussed the coordinated program review draft, and submitted our corrective action plan for those areas of partial compliance. We have about one year, we have one year to correct them. We believe that they will accept what we have proposed, but we'll wait and see. In your folders, I passed a folder to you. I've shared both the findings and the steps we will be taking to address these issues. Basically, there, I'll just be, I'll be brief about it. One issue concerns the required ESL time. I'm sure you know that the district sees an ever-increasing enrollment of ELL students every year. We, just last year alone, we had 150 additional students, and most of them are at the elementary level. So it is somewhat difficult at times to provide that instructional time at the elementary school. But we did, we do, we do have a plan to correct that. We'll be looking at student schedules, at teacher schedules. We'll be reassigning, we may be reassigning one or two teachers elsewhere so that we meet that requirement. We are going to give those, that, those services to our English language learners. As for the document keeping, well, we're going to create a checklist, and I will also have my own folders kept at the parent information center so that we ensure that all documents are kept. I'm not sure at this time if you have any questions, but I'll be, please, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Feranti.
Albert, what question, it looks like that we have to be compliant by May 23rd, and you said there's only three that you have partials that you have to do. If for some reason they don't accept them and get done, what are the consequences?
Well, what will happen is they will, they will, they will report to us, and they will give us a couple, they'll give us suggestions, and then we'll report back to them and tell them whether we're going, then we'll report back to them. But we will have a meeting of the minds. We have, they want to see us make a good effort to, to reach these, to address these issues, and we're going to make that effort. We have a year, though, to have, to address them.
And Mr. Feranti, I would just add to that. One of the things that the state doesn't recognize is the excellent job that our English Language Learner Department has done, ESL Department has done, in helping students and actually close the achievement gap. One thing that we can say is that we've had huge success with the programs that we do have. So the state recognizes that we, that what we are doing is highly effective in terms of increasing student achievement, but they want us to meet these mandated levels, and that's what we're going to try to do.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mogavero, very much for your report. That was excellent. And I would just add also that the state recognizes that these, these three findings that we had partially implemented, it's actually, this is an outstanding job that we only had that finding on three out of the 18 criteria. Most other districts have significantly more criteria that they missed the mark on. So kudos to Mr. Mogavero and everybody in his department for a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, motion for a two-minute recess?
Two, two-minute recess. And we're back. We're back to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Rigo. So I, the one last thing that I wanted to talk about tonight was the district focus, and I know that we've talked a lot over the last year about my entry plan and the process of collecting information from stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, you folks, and everybody else who would talk to me about what they thought the priorities should, for the district should be. And so I'm proud to say that between PTA meetings, school visits, and cabinet meetings and other administrative meetings that we've had, we had over 50 meetings with, with folks to talk about these things. So I feel like we've really pulled a lot of data together, and we've gone through a good bit of process of culling the data and finding the patterns and the trends, and we wanted to use those patterns and trends to see where a lot of people had similar ideas on things that we should be working on to make the school district better, and then focus on those things that were important to a lot of people. So using all of that data, in addition, we had some survey data that students filled out at school levels, and we also had some survey data that the administrative team filled out about the school department itself. And last time we were here, we shared with you the Wordle documents that showed what was most important to different groups, and tonight we've taken a look at kind of culling that together so that we can start to develop a district focus, which would be a long-range, five-year plan on what the district should work on. And the purpose of doing this is really to bring together common ideas about what our work should be, what direction should we be heading in, what should we be prioritizing, and then, once we have those priorities identified, use those topics to guide what the professional development should be for educators in the district, and also guide budgetary decisions so that our work is focused in particular areas. And what, what this helps us do is make our priorities and our work transparent to everybody involved. So we took a look at all of the data that I mentioned before, all of the data sources, and we highlighted, we asked each group to highlight for us what they thought were the most important things for us to work on. And so you can see on the chart here that the parents identified grading, extra help, and project-based work, communication, relationships with parents and family, ELL, extra help and interpreters, budget, class size, technology, and more clubs as their priorities. And then the RHEL, the Revere Educators Leadership Board, which is comprised of teachers and administrators, identified community and family engagement, class size, communication, grading and assessment, relationships, and special population needs such as English language learners and special education students. And then the administrative team identified communication, supporting new administrators, fostering relationships, working with English language learners, parents, and evaluations. It's interesting to me that we just had a report from Mr. Mogavero about the ways that we can improve our program for English language learners, and that was something that was highlighted as an area for us to focus on by parents, by teachers, and by administrators. So, you know, I just thought that I'd mention that. But when we looked at these different pieces, Dr. Mokaba and the rest of the team tried to identify trends in the data, and what you see here is kind of a color-coded version linking these different ideas together. So in yellow, we have probably what I think is the most important topic for people, and it's all around communication and relationships. And then we have two subcategories that came up a lot. One was the piece about grading and project-based class size, all of that kind of stuff, assessments. And the third one in blue is the piece about special populations, English language learners, and special education students, all of that. We worked with our administrative team and said, you know, let's think about all of these ideas and how we can fit them together. What are the big rocks, or the big ideas, the big things that we should focus on, and what should we call them so that we can capture all of these different ideas from all of these different groups of people? And we spent some time at our end-of-year administrative meeting doing that work, and this was with all administrators from across the district, so there were 47 people in the room, and they came up with these titles, and they thought that to capture this idea about communication, community, family, relationships, we should talk about building community. And in that we mean building community among all of the people who engage with the Revere Public Schools, students, teachers, parents, administrators, local business people, everybody who can. And then we looked at the piece about the class size and the grading, and of course, we had a lot more specific data that we were looking at. It wasn't just looking at this chart, but in looking at all of that, they came up with assessment of and for student learning and feedback. And it's kind of a complicated title, but it's intended to capture a lot of information, a lot of different ideas that we want to work on. And I'll start by talking about the assessment of student learning. We talked about the importance of having some data on what kids know and are able to do in order to inform our instruction. But we also talked about assessment for learning. And by that we mean taking away, looking at how we assess students and how we give them feedback on their learning that help them, helps them to learn more. So an example that I talked about earlier, they'll talk about again for the parents, is, you know, if a student is tasked with writing a research paper, writing any kind of a paper, any kind of a narrative, and they get it back and it says "be" on the top of the paper, that means that they did pretty good on it, but it doesn't tell them why they did pretty good on it, or how they did pretty good, or what were the paths they should have changed. If instead the student gets a paper back and it has a little bit of a note from the teacher that says, "I really liked how you linked paragraph one to paragraph two. I saw a connection between those two topics, but when I got to paragraph three, I wasn't sure how that connected to the rest of your paper." Well, that student's going to come back with a different kind of paper next time and have different kind of information about how to improve his or her grade, and that's going to serve them well, not just in the class that they're in, but in all of the subsequent classes they take in the Revere Public Schools and in college and everywhere beyond that. It's going to help them communicate better when they're in the workplace. So that's what we mean by assessment for student learning. So let's not just assess kids to see what they know, but let's assess them in ways that they can articulate their learning and their knowledge and grow from the process. And that's where the feedback piece comes in as well. And, you know, the third grouping there, we talked, what we decided was, in the examples above and the table, it specifically cites English language learners and special needs students, but in our conversation, we decided it was really important for us to think about teaching all students, regardless of any special criteria that they meet. We want to make sure that no matter who the student is, we're meeting his or her needs. And so if they're an advanced or honors-level student, we want to make sure that we're structuring instruction so that that student is being pushed to even higher levels of achievement. And if the student happens to have some learning needs that are unique, then we want to make sure we're addressing those, and if they're an English language learner, we want to meet the unique needs of those kids as well. So the point is that we don't want to focus on particular populations. We want to focus on meeting the needs of all individual students. So all of this work really is not new or unique. It's not a different branch of the work that we've been doing. For over 10 years, we've been talking about the three Rs and the four Rs that Dr. Daken established as priorities for the district a decade ago, and they really link to the work that we're doing. We're just looking at different nuances of the relationships, the relevance, the rigor, the rigor and the resilience that we've been working on. And in particular, building community is about relationships and relevance. Assessment for and of student learning and feedback is about rigor, relevance, and resilience, teaching kids to take feedback and change the way that they do work. And teaching all students is certainly about relationships, relevance, and resilience. So we're, we're really just digging a little bit deeper into those ideas. The administrative team did come up with a number of ideas, and these are the bullet points below. I'm not going to read through all of them, but they were talking about some of the things that we might want to focus on over the next five years to help us build community. And if you, if you see here, there are, what, 10 bullets here, this would be an awful lot of work to try to do in, in one school year, and that's why we're looking at this district focus as more of a five-year plan. And in a couple minutes, I'm going to talk about next steps, but one of the next steps, we'll be looking through these bullets, seeing if we want to add some, seeing if we want to take some away, and then identifying which in particular we want to target for the next school year. And so the goal is that when we come back in September, we'll be able to share that information with the community, with parents, and with the school committee. They identified bullets also for assessment of and for student learning and feedback. You can see those here on, on the screen. These ones, you'll notice, they identified more about professional development. That's what the PD stands for, and so many of those bullets. And these are areas that we've identified that we think we need to understand better as a school instructional community before we can make moves. So in this case, you might see some professional development targeted for the next year or two, and then actual implementation or changes taking in place in the year three, four, or five. And then under teaching all students, the same, we've got about seven bullets identified already here. And here's where we see a lot of the pieces. This is a lot of the work that we, we've learned a lot from the Nellie May Grant that's been in place at Revere High School, where we started talking about flipped learning and blended learning practices, and college and career coaching, and growth mindset, and all of those pieces. And what we really do want to do is help kids take a larger role in their own, own education. So let them identify the capstone or portfolio project that's going to help them demonstrate their knowledge and their ability. And in that way, we can meet the needs of all students by crafting unique educational experiences that are suited to their needs there in their preferred areas of study. experiences that are suited to their needs there in their preferred areas of study. So, our next steps, as I mentioned before, one of them is going to be staging out the work and then setting the priorities for the 16, 17 school year. And we hope to have that ready for presentation at the September School Committee meeting. We're also going to need to identify how success will be measured, when will we know if we've met any of these goals, and how will we progress, monitor progress along the way? And then we also need to take this work and have it translate into our goals as administrators and then the goals that the teachers set for themselves and also the school improvement plans across the district. So I do, I, I feel good, I feel like our, my, the entry plan, all of the visits, the school visits and the interviews are starting to take shape into something that's going to help move us forward as a district and help us bring student achievement to the next level.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any committee members? Ms. Thai.
Actually, Mr. Sneller and I were just observing the same thing about how difficult this kind of assessment for student feed, learning and feedback is in, when we have such a huge class size, it's really difficult. I mean, I, having done it for 35 years, I know how difficult it is to, instead of just correcting a capital letter or a comma, to try to write about what is, what is effective, how the argument is effective or what it lacks in effectiveness and how to do all of that. That is an enormous commitment and time for my teachers. And now, it's not just English teachers who do it, but it's everybody who does it. So it's really, kudos to the teachers who are devoting all that extra time to it because it is a very difficult and very time-consuming task and they've, they've got to be dedicated.
And I'll just mention to that point, Ms. Thai, in identifying what steps we would need to take in order to work on these different things, if you, I'm going to take us back to the slide, to the one for assessment for and of student learning and feedback. And you'll notice the second to last bullet is reduce class size. Because the only way that can work is if we reduce class size. And then if I go to the next one, teaching all students, it's phrased differently, but they identified a way for us to teach all students is to increase staffing, which is just the same thing as saying reduce class size, you know? The teachers don't have time to focus on individual student needs when there are 34 kids in front of them. So this, these are things, obviously, this has been a very difficult budget year for us and we were not able to increase staff at all. In fact, we actually lost a few positions this year in the budgeting process. But so that, but that's one of those things that we want to keep on our radar so that when our budget does improve, which hopefully will be next year, then we can say, you know what, increasing staff is a major priority in order for us to reach our goals. So that's one of the things that we're going to dedicate any new funding to. And that's why having such a focus like this, spelled out, transparent, everybody can understand why it is we want to do some new hiring, maybe in particular around ELL students and social-emotional learning and these college and career coaching and things like that as targets, because these are the ways that we've identified as a community to help move our kids forward.
It's a great dream to have.
It is.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any other committee members? Okay. We're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is subcommittee reports. Mr. McGuire, any?
None.
None. Any school department communications?
None.
New business? There's none. Motions? There are none. No late communications? Public comments?
Anyone?
Anyone?
No.
There are no payments of bills? Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, there are payments, payments bills, okay. Mr. McGuire.
Say.
Motion.
Motion to pay the bills?
He made the motion, I say.
All right. All in favor, all opposed? So moved. The, before we call for adjournment, the next school committee meeting will be August 23rd at 6:00 PM. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Good evening.